Venture out to the Village of Monroe for everything you need this holiday season.
Dashing through Monroe for coffee and a bite. Can't forget the shovel and sled in case it snows tonight. Fresh baked bread, Christmas trees, poinsettias for the wife. Cookie baskets full of fun and cakes that will delight. Accessories, handmade wreaths, clothing just your size. Wonderful place, the Holiday Shop Monroe is always bright.
Venture out to Monroe this holiday season.
Okay, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you make the announcement? There's more people that came in. You have two sheets.
Alan, make it again. Hi, everyone. There are two sign up sheets at this table. There's two public hearings tonight. There's one for Verizon and there's one for Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center. If you could please write your name and address on whichever sheet you're here for if you want to speak. And when you speak, please walk up to the microphone and speak right into the microphone.
Okay, so we just need a motion to open up our meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And Member Kelly, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's open. First on the agenda is the public hearing. Let me, before I do that, let me just take a roll call for our attendance so it gets onto the, are you recording?
Oh, no. Thank you. This should be being filmed.
It'll still be on. Okay, so we had a motion, a second, to open the, our meeting officially. And we'll roll call for attendance. Member Alan is not here.
He's on his way.
He's on his way?
Yeah.
So, Member Mouché, present. Member Hefnecker.
Present.
Member Ainucci.
Present.
Member Karlic.
Present.
Member Kelly.
Present.
Member Umberto.
Present.
Okay, and for our professionals tonight, we have Eternity Cassidy with us.
Present.
And...
Dave Higgins.
Yeah, Dave Higgins from Langantully.
Present.
Clint Smith.
Present.
All right, so our first up is our public hearing for Verizon Wireless. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Member Ainucci, in second.
I'll second.
Member Kelly, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public meeting is now open. I'm going to ask, Scott Olson here? Scott, if you want to give...
Mr. Chairman, before, can we read the notice?
Yes, we need to, for the, yeah.
I did not bring it. If you have it, I'll read it.
And we did receive an affidavit publication?
Correct, we did.
Please take notice that the Village Planning Board of the Village of Monroe will hold a public hearing at the Village of Monroe Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York 10950, on December 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, if possible, on the site plan and special use application of Verizon Wireless of the East LLP, DVA Verizon Wireless, for the construction of a small cellular antenna approximately six and a half feet tall to be fixed to the top of a 43 and a half foot tall wooden pole within eight foot by eight foot fence equipment enclosure at the place to be located at 21 Still Road, SBL 222-1-4. A copy of the application is available for review in the planning department located at Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York 10950, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. By order of the Planning Board of the Village of Monroe, Jeff Boucher, Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Elizabeth.
And if we can prove mailings? Proof of mailings?
Proof of mailings, confirm?
The proof of mailing, yes. Yeah.
And just Scott, before you jump up there, just so everyone knows how the public meeting, public hearing works, there, if there's any conversation or whatever conversation there is, the board typically does not respond to you directly from the public. What we want is all of your comments. We listen to them, they all get recorded. It goes to the applicant or to, you know, whoever, the engineers or whatever the questions are, you know, directed to, we put that together. They review all that and they come back to us and we still continue with that discussion and the ongoing procedures for our applications. So with that in mind, don't think that we're just sitting, you know, not listening. We listen to everything. We've been working with the applicants, both of them, for a while now. So, just so you, you're aware how that works. And so now, Scott, if you'll come up?
So, good evening. My name is Scott Olson, I represent Verizon Wireless. I don't see anybody listed on the Verizon sign in sheet, but, excuse me. Just to refresh our recollection...
There could be people online too, just so you know.
Oh, okay. Just to refresh our recollection, we're proposing a new small cell at 21 Still Road. It's St. Paul's Church. We've talked with the planning board over months about the location. Originally, we had it closer to the road. And then as a result of the comments from your engineer and the board, we ended up relocating it closer to the northernish property line where the existing tree line is. We moved about 14 feet or so. And it's kind of tucked up there. We, it'll be a secure facility. Total height, 50 feet. We, I think at the workshop, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about landscaping. And we said we weren't proposing any landscaping, but I think since we provided some plans, that they said they would put some landscaping, you know, on, I think it was two of the sides, to provide additional screening. So that's on the revised plans. And Mr. Umberto, we provided some information. I know I, it was late. It was tonight, I apologize for that. But we have someone that can talk to. Also, you mentioned a town in New Jersey where they put these facilities above, they extend the existing poles basically to go above. And Brian's architect here, he's from Aerosmith, he was very involved with locating the site. He can explain that they did actually look at what poles would be available. As I explained, I think, the last meeting, if there's a primary line transformer on a pole, we can't even, they won't even let us extend it, put anything on it. But Brian can speak to that if you need some additional information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think there was another issue, I think it was Mr. Chairman, you were talking about what, you know, what sites could we identify for the rest of the village in the future? And we have Verizon Wireless' art engineer here tonight. He can explain that. I don't know if, and I apologize, I just don't know if you have a certain map that you should have. So, I have copies of it. It shows basically from, it was done in October. And it shows different sites that we are working on currently. Some sites have been zoning, and they're called coding. So, some sites have been approved in zoning and we're working to get them developed. Some sites aren't even at the zoning stage yet. You're welcome. And, but that's what we have planned right now in and around Monroe. You're welcome. So, I don't know if you...
So, did it come in today?
This is the first time I'm seeing. Did it come today?
That one came in today.
Okay, so, so the documents that all came today, a lot of the board members haven't been able to look at it just because they just came in.
I totally understand that, I just wanted to at least have it.
No, I appreciate it.
And I figured we'd talk about it tonight.
Okay.
But generally, that's, I think we did mention and provide some information about the Pine Tree site. That's another small cell site that we are working on. We're not in zoning yet. Because we just don't have the site secured and everything designed. But that's another site that will be in the village. I think it'll be similar to this type of a site. But that's shown on the plans also, on that map that you have. But that's what we have. We can't really go any further right now, other than what we have on that map.
So, right now, you just see the one at Still Road and one future possibly in the Pine Tree development somewhere?
Correct, yes. That, we're actively working on the Pine Tree one.
Well, the Rye Hill one too, you said is...
Sorry, the Rye Hill one is...
There it is.
It's kind of on hold.
Yes, because there's an issue with... Yes, because there's something, and I don't know the details of the Rye Hill, something has happened, potentially may be relocated, and it's kind of like a domino effect. If that site gets relocated, it kind of changes where the other sites will need to be.
So, does this map with all these pin placements assume that that one's moving forward? Or is this the alternative?
That would be in Rye Hill?
In other words, if Rye Hill on hold is going forward and happens, do these pin placements represent that going forward? Or is this the alternative?
No. We, we need these sites based on, unless Martin's going to tell me the other one. But my understanding is, these are the sites that we have, that we have, have been budgeted for, we've been working for, and that we believe are needed for this location. You know, including the village and just areas outside the village.
So, when you say it's going to change everything, if that doesn't go through, what is it you're referring to that's going to change?
It's, right now, there's the Rye Hill site. They originally located at a certain location. I don't know if the issue something has come up. And so they're not sure exactly where it's going to be. So, but...
But then you said...
It should not affect the, it should not affect this Monroe McDonald's site. Pine Tree site, I don't know, I don't think it would because it's a small cell.
So, when you say should not...
Right.
You don't know?
Monroe McDonald's will not. We're here, we would like the approval, we would like to build it. That's not going to change that.
Would it change needing it or the requirement or why it's being put there?
No, one of the main needs is actually the Monroe Tower, we call it Monroe. It may not be in Monroe exactly, but it's just to the north. It's south of Route 6, but to the north of the site that we're proposing. It is suffering significantly from capacity, okay? These facilities can only handle a finite amount of traffic. Whether it's 1,000, 2,000, because there are only so many channels of frequency.
Is that what your micro or macro was designating on this?
So, the micro site is what we call a small cell site. Macro is more of your traditional tower. You'll, you'll see it 120 feet.
It's an actual structure.
It's a structure that you know as a tower, a traditional cell tower.
So, the one that we're doing now is a micro?
Yes, it is. And under federal law, it's micro, it meets a certain definition of 50 feet or less, a small amount of, I think it's 28 cubic feet of equipment, you know. So, it's a micro. But we need it because the Monroe site right now is actually, if, so in the village, people that use their Verizon Wireless phone are drawing that signal from the Monroe site, but there are too many people drawing the signal. So, the Monroe, it just can't handle all the people using the facility. So, the engineer said, well, this is a high traffic area. We put a small cell here, a new server, basically, transmitter, that will relieve some of the traffic being experienced on the Monroe site. So, because this is the area that's drawing it down. So, they figured, put a small cell there.
And the yellow pin, the ones that are being looked at as proposed sites, right? In the zoning, I guess they're in pre-zoning development? Are those all micro sites?
No. So, several of these sites are up above Route 6 in Curious Jowl, or I don't know how to pronounce it. They have a major, they have a major problem up there with service. We have like five sites up there. I think most of them are actually macro sites.
Yeah, that's what they said.
They're all macro sites. Now, some of them are co-locations on a building when they can, but most of them are new tower sites.
Right.
Right, but the one, but the one down here in the village, the Pine Tree site and the Monroe McDonald's, those are the micro sites or the small cells.
Okay. So, I just want to open it up for public comment in case there is anyone here that wanted to, to comment on the Verizon tower that we're talking about? And if so, please step up to the microphone. Let it be part of the record that no one has stepped forward to speak about the tower.
Is there anybody online with it?
So, I'm going to ask Clint if you'll just take a minute, Clint, and just comment on the information. And we didn't get a chance to look at today's information that came in. I'm not sure that you did.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we want to do that as part of the...
Oh, public hearing? Do it after...
Do it as part of the regular meeting? For purposes that solicit public knowledge?
No, you're right, you're right, you're right.
That's your choice?
You know, I think we should close that public hearing and then, and then talk. So, just give us a sec. So, with no one coming forward, we need a motion to...
Did you check online? But nobody...
I wouldn't even know how to do that.
I don't know how to do that either, I haven't been told.
They can hear, but they can't, they can't speak.
They can't, it's not a two way.
So, we want to leave a period open too, as well.
In light of there being...
No one here.
...any here and see if you need to...
Right.
What I would, what I would suggest is close the public hearing.
Mm-hmm. Discussion.
And given the nature, I would have a brief discussion rather than making you guys wait for the...
Yep, totally get it.
Relatively brief. And then get you out of here and move on.
So, we just need a motion to close the public hearing for Verizon.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Member Umberto, in a second.
I'll second it.
Member Hefnecker? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carries, meeting is closed. So now, Clint, if you would just go ahead and make a comment.
Well, my name's Clint Smith. I've been hired by the board to provide some engineering, engineering review of the material provided by Verizon. And from the previous meetings I've been here, I did go through the radio emissions report that they provided and checking if they were in compliance of FCC rules. And the report clearly showed that the site that they are proposing does meet, is in compliance and overall. Even with the site being moved back 14 feet from where it initially was because they generated the report at the original location, but they moved it back 14 feet. And the compliance report is still valid even for that movement from location A to location B. It's still good. There is no FAA requirements because of the site's height. And as such, we did ask a few questions of the Verizon engineers when they were here. We did ask, could they increase the height of the site possibly to reduce the amount of potential future sites in the Village of Monroe? Subsequently, we did get a report back from the Verizon engineer indicating that the raising of the height of the site by 10 feet or 15 feet didn't have any real substantial impact in terms of the coverage difference. So, they didn't see the advantage of actually increasing the height. They said to keep it to the, under the 50 feet. And in fact, that was the Director of Implementations or desire was to keep it below 50 feet, to keep it as a micro, as a micro site. As a point, Verizon initially did provide some technical information showing the site's capacity and coverage, or rather, or attempt to show that the site was needed, the potentially new site was needed. During that process, they provided propagation plots and some traffic analysis, traffic reports, showing that the site that they needed to provide capacity offloading was the Monroe site. And as they call it, Monroe site. And that's the reason for the small micro site we put in. It was meant to try to relieve some of the capacity issues that are going on at the Monroe site. And that led us to the question of, because it's a small site, it had a small footprint in terms of geographic area it's going to cover. And that's where we asked the question, could they raise the antenna height? Kind of went in reverse, I should have brought that up first, but, you know, the point is I'm just going back over a little bit of history. So, we did ask at the last, at the last major meeting that we had, for Verizon to show some future plans, what they were going to do. And also to show, did they have any, you know, could they show any type of traffic study or anything else to give us a better indication of what the need was? The reports I got that really came in a little bit last month, and a report was issued today from Verizon indicating that, you know, in short, the, you know, they didn't have any, they don't really have an idea where the future sites are going to be, even though Scott over here was very nice to show a map that had some pin points on it showing where the future, some future sites were. And with that, and they also did not provide any, you know, showing any type of traffic need or anything else. I think that was because they said it was proprietary at that point. But I think we were trying to get some type of non-proprietary information being provided. But that was never shown. And that's, but I, on the Monroe site that they showed, they did show that they needed some type of capacity relief. So, they do, they have a problem in the area for capacity. And that was, that came up on their initial report. With regards to, you know, additional future sites, I haven't had a chance to look at that map that they provided today. So, you know, it's nice, usually when you see those, you know, they were kind of indicating future sites, they're search rings, they don't really, it's really not a physical location, it's a relative location, they're saying something in that geographic area. You know, and that's, that's about it. You know, usually, they're all supposed to be interlinked between each other. So, hopefully, you know, they're all supposed to work somewhat in concert together. But, like I said, I didn't get a chance to really go, you know, I didn't get a chance to see that particular, you know, map at this moment. I think I covered that?
Yeah.
I covered all the points?
Yep. Yeah, and I think, yeah, so we'd be interested, after you look and review these, to get your feedback on what's been presented as well.
I expect to do that.
Yep, great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, have we received two thirty minutes back from the time plan?
I don't think so.
Okay, we're still within our...
Thirty day?
Thirty day window.
Correct.
And I think what I would, what I would suggest is, given the materials we got today, I think what we can do is set this up for, Clint will have his review by the work session. That'll give us the work session and the regular meetings to button and issue jobs. We'll have two thirty nine by then. And then we'll be in a place to take, should be in a place, absent something unexpected at the January meeting. If that's getting what you're saying.
Right.
So, that'll, and then we'll be outside of our thirty day clock.
Yeah.
I would just ask for the applicants' consent to that schedule.
Yes.
Okay, is that it?
Anything else, I'll leave you, you and Clint can have those conversations.
I don't have, I don't have anything else, you think, do we say anything?
All right.
Okay.
So, if there is, we'll certainly get back to you, you know...
Yeah, and if, you know, Clint can, I don't know if he contacted our engineers directly or not. I don't know if the board, why should he do that? However, you want to handle it, it's fine with us.
I don't have any to that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
If you have any questions, obviously.
Which one, which one out of the three?
Brendan, Brendan, and we can forward it to the bar and we'll sort it. Okay? I got a copy of that back. Of course.
I know, I know you offered one earlier.
It did offer one earlier.
Yes, and I should have paid back.
It came back, I think I said it, it came back. In response to what I sent you, it came back and I remembered, I did understand. There you go. I'll delete that error match.
And that map was sent today, I think? Is that part of it? Okay.
Yeah, it was, there were three that were sent.
It's right here today.
Okay.
It should have been sent earlier, so...
Three.
But that one, you didn't get, one of them got sent back to me as an error.
So, Rhonda will send, we'll just send you a copy of everything that we got. So, this way, we're sure you have it.
And Rhonda, if you can put them on the January work session and regular meeting agenda, it don't need to make a decision. It could be on the agenda.
Okay.
And do you want us to be here during the work session? I'm just not familiar with the big names. Not a problem.
I would say it would depend on what Clint sees and what, when we look at the information that's been provided, we can let you know.
We'll follow up and what's where you see it. But through the door.
Yeah.
The printers will let you know if they're applying or anything, so you'll know.
Okay. Then you make the decision.
Right.
And I won't wait until the last day.
So, the date that I sent you.
Okay? All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You have a nice night.
You too. All right, next up on our agenda is a public hearing for the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center, site plan review. And so we just need a motion to open a public hearing.
I'd like to make that motion to open up the public hearing for Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center.
Member Umberto made the motion, in a second.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is now open. Is, so, is Ryan here? Ryan's here, yeah. Yeah, so Ryan, I don't know if you want to, yes.
Chair.
Oh, yeah.
We have to go through the paperwork, yes.
You've got to read that into the record again.
Read the note.
Yes.
Give me one second. Did I pull up this one? I think I should have. Please take notice that the Village Planning Board of the Village of Monroe will hold a public hearing at the Village of Monroe Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York 10950, on December 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, if possible, on the site plan application of the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center for demolition of the existing structures for the construction of a place of religious assembly consisting of a building with a footprint of 14,596 square feet, 102 parking spaces and outdoor congregation space located at 1431 Orange Turnpike, SBL 231-1-3.42. A copy of the application is available for review in the building planning department located at Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York 10950, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. By order of the Planning Board of the Village of Monroe, Jeff Boucher, Chairman. And we have affidavit of publication and...
Correct, both publication and mailing.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Ryan, maybe I'll have you come up and just do a very brief overview of what we're, of what's being, and again, this is really also because there's people online looking and listening. So, if you would just...
Do you have a minute to set up the board for the plan?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Do we have your easel?
What's that?
There's an, Ryan, oh, you have an easel? Because there's an easel right behind you in the corner over there, the wooden one. I don't know if you need two.
It's very sleek, I'm very...
Choose that one then. Ours is old and wooden.
If it doesn't work, then I want to just...
Okay.
Yeah, probably the most amount of people.
Yeah.
And if you could face it to the audience, whoever's speaking is going to have to speak into that microphone, so it's close. I think you might want to put it as close to the microphone.
Maybe you want to put it over this side.
Right there, yeah.
And up as far as you can, there you go.
Yeah, and then whoever's speaking can speak right into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Nasher. I'm from Atsul, Nasher and Ziegler. We are engineers and the surveyor. We have here our design team. Ahmed is our architect. Dominic Kuduski is our attorney. Steve from DTS Providence is our traffic consultant. We have finally Steve Esposito joining us. We have Mohammed Mia, he's the president for the mosque. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project. Just briefly, I know that it's going to be a long night, so I'm going to be just very brief and just talk about like an overview of the project. This Monroe Bar Islamic Center, they've been operating and using their mosques since 2015. Currently, the access to the site is off Orange Turnpike. It's currently a, it's a driveway. So, it's a residential site, typical driveway they use. The proposed site to build a four-way access to meet the fire code for the site. Right now, the size of the building, the prayer area, they have approximately 5,200, that including two floors. What they do, they have the prayer time five days a week. They also hold the Sunday school for the kids ranges 4 to 16 years old. But they're not the classroom. So, currently, the structure is so old, it's taken beyond repairable. So, what they're proposing to take this down and then really propose a new building and to have their program, like, you know, Sunday school, the prayer going to be as is, but the difference is going to be what they have now. They're going to add like a new structure that really safely operate the site. that really safely operate the site. Just to give you some number, what they have right now, like a fifty-two hundred for the prayer area, the proposed building is fourteen thousand square feet for the main level, and with the mezzanine, it's going to be added up, probably above, like, you know, I mean, the architect is going to go over the number, but it's going to be about nineteen thousand, some changes. But the prayer area is going to be above seventy-eight hundred. Mezzanine structure is going to be separate prayer for the men, women, women are going to be on the mezzanine structure, and the main level is going to be for men to pray. The, the five days prayer, they have approximately fifteen attendees. The first prayer, they start from six o'clock in the morning, there's the incoming traffic, they get up in six fifteen, just fifteen minutes, maybe twenty minutes the most. The second prayer, that's five days a week, start from one o'clock in the afternoon, and they get out like in twenty minutes. The third one, right now, like around three o'clock, the time changes because of the winter, the daylight savings, you know, this is what is really right now, just giving the number. Our prayer, three o'clock in the afternoon, in flow traffic, and they get out like three twenty, three twenty-five. Fourth prayer, around four thirty, which is really the evening time, and they're out like in twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes the most. The last one, the eight o'clock, they start and they're gone by twenty minutes, like eight, twenty, eight, twenty-five. They hold two large event plan, two times a year, it's more like, you know, what you have, like, you know, for the religion, like at Christmas, they have e prayers. We have estimated attendees about in the range of two hundred, two hundred fifty, you know, the number could be changes, you know, so being conservative, you're talking about like, you know, two hundred fifty. But the, the overall site plan was designed based on their weekly operation and they use, which is the Friday prayers. Number of attendees we counted for is about hundred seventy. So DTS Providence, they did the traffic study, so on Friday, they, they come in and they counted the, the number of vehicle. So it's, it's two different things, like number of attendees and the number of vehicles are two different things, so we estimated number is hundred seventy, for so the vehicle they count is about, about eighty, for the vehicle that coming in. Now, the, the time, on Friday, they would start from twelve forty-five, people start to coming in. And the prayer start like fifteen minutes, like at one o'clock. They will hold their prayer for about forty to forty-five minutes, and people they start to get out at one forty-five, and by the time they're like, they're completely gone, it's about two o'clock. So between one forty-five and two o'clock, the, the congregation, they, they are gone. Friday is a working day, so basically what they do, they take a lunch break probably, you know, they come in, they pray, and then get back to work. So, our traffic consultant, DTS Providence, they did their initial traffic study. It was reviewed by your traffic consultant, Kim Lee Hong. They, they looked at it, they have some comments, we respected their comments, and a couple of days ago, I got the happy letter from them, they are happy, they don't feel like there's any impact to that. The site plan requires to go to the state E C for the I S T R M O R management and the general construction permit. We prepared the plan to provide the drainage mitigation that shows the proposed building, we are taking the roof drain, going to the underground integration practice, and the drainage, as of right now, is kind of split it. So the site is like, you know, what the structure there now is kind of a high site, and at the back, it's really dropped down about ten feet, it's a, it's a, it's a topographic, I don't know the plan that we have. So we're taking the building and then trying to the proposed catch basin and trying to the Orange Turnpike. So, what's going to happen, the drainage is there now, it's going to really drastically improve the drainage, because you're taking the roof drain, and also for the parking lot, we propose porous asphalt. What does it do, it really absorbs the water and provides the water quality before it's really discharged to the Orange Turnpike. And that plan was reviewed by your consultant, we, we have, we have some comments, I sat down with General, went through the comments, those are all technical items, like, you know, providing the arrow for the traffic information, like, you know, how it's going to be, the striping, technical detail, water sewer, we have no problem on, like, you know, addressing this comment, because they're all technical items. The, the sewer is going to be a pump, because currently they're, they have the separately. We tried like in a different plan, and it looks like the best way to really do it, and not really impacting the surrounding neighbors, it's going to be really coming up from the building, going to the Orange Turnpike, and really going to the south, to Coffee Road, and then looking to the existing sewer, they have the gravity connection. The water, they have the water connection on Orange Turnpike and also on Renault. I think the best connection is going to be going to their existing water, what is there now. They have existing easement, it's currently show the gravel road, okay? So, I spoke to Langton Tully, they said that the best way going to be not to cut the road for the Orange Turnpike, but just use what is they have now through their easement on the gravel roadway that connect to the Renault. We did the lighting plan, lighting plan was prepared by Brad Lighting. We did the first round review, and received comment from your boards, and what we have done, or the thing, we lower it down, make sure that the light is just not like, you know, showing up, and then really impacting the sounding neighbors. So I, I'm going to just show the snapshot, how the site is going to look like, when you're going to build, just to show the rendering for the lighting, so people could have an idea, like, you know, how it's going to look like, it's not like it's stadium or anything, but it's just like, you know, how it's going to look like.
You can maybe angle to the middle of the room.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
Maybe angle a little bit, yeah. No, 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 you can leave it where you just angle it to the right.
Oh, like an angle?
Angle to the right, yeah, yeah. Better?
Yeah.
The microphone.
Just grab the, you can pull that microphone off.
Yeah, you can take it off.
Absolutely.
So, it's the lighting plan that shows how it's going to look like at night, when the site going to be built. The whole black hatch area over here, this is the proposed building, and we have the, the lighting pole proposed for the parking lot, and these are the surrounding neighbors. It has no impact that show how it's going to be really the lighting to the surrounding neighborhood. And it meets the code for the I S C standard. What the code is saying, you have to maintain point one foot candles, that means no lighting affecting the neighbors, and also people who are driving on the Orange Turnpike not to glare their eyes, okay? So this is how it's going to look like. We have consultants who really spend their time to prepare the, the architecture plan. We have the landscape architect who did a fantastic job on how it's going to really look like when the site going to be built. We understand that when we build this plan, the tree going to be clear up, and it's really not many trees there, but we're going to provide many more trees when the site going to be built up. So, with your permission, I could invite our architect to show their plan, and also the lady, Steve, to show the landscaping, so they could really show their work. Let's see if you have a question, I think the best things to do have been presented, and then we're going to take questions, and we'll be happy to answer all our time.
Yep.
Thanks.
I don't, do I have a P D F of that, if I have it, I'll just put it up.
Sure.
I have the traffic review. Oh, I believe it's this one.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The TV can be turned too, if you want to hit...
Yeah, just don't turn it too much, because I got to see what's on there. Perfect.
Yeah.
Lovely, thank you. It's just easier that way.
So hello again, my name is Ahmed Amara, I'm the architect for the project, just to take you through it once again.
You can take that off if you want, it's much easier. Yeah.
To take you through it and take everyone through it again, if you can go to the... First sheet here showing the location of the building and what's existing, so that drawing in the middle showing what's existing today, was being demolished, and the existing traffic roadway, and, and basically the parking is gravel parking. The next sheet, if you go to, thank you. This is showing the proposed site plan and the proposed roof plan, so the darker gray here is the proposed roof plan. The entrance is off of Orange Turnpike, the parking is in the front, and then you have the handicap parking spaces closer to the building, with a plaza space in the front of the building, and then we have the mosque and the ancillary program surrounding the mosque in this shape here, and the main cube of there is the prayer area. This is the lower level floor plans, this, and we have the multipurpose spaces here with bathrooms, and mostly mechanical spaces to serve as the, the mosque for the prayer areas, the Sunday school areas, and the administrative. And if we go to the next floor plan, this is the main floor plan of the building, I'll just wait for it to load, so this is the main floor plan of the building, you'll see where that dark arrow is, this is the main entrance, right here. So this is that plaza, gathering plaza in the front, this is the main entrance, when you enter the building, there is a big foyer hall, entrance hall with a skylight above it to the left. We're separating the program between the spiritual aspect of the bu, building and the administrative and, and other areas, so on the left side is the, are the classrooms for the Sunday school. On the right side is the men's prayer area on the ground floor, and towards the back here are the administrative offices. There is also a library component that you actually see directly when you come in, in that direction is the library right, right there. If we go to the next one, please. Thank you. So the upper floor is the women's prayer space, and it's the mezzanine here, it's only half the level of what's below, total of about twenty-one hundred square feet, also separate facilities for the bathrooms, the ablution area where you prepare for the prayer, and then there is also a small kids' area up above. The roof is accessed, if we go to the next... The roof is accessible from one of the Means of Ygra stairs, it's a fire-rated stair to take it all the way up. We mentioned, we talked about this last time, the, the possible need for fire access apparatus, apparatus road. It's not required, I actually spoke to, I'm not sure if you can see it today or not, but Jim Cox, the building code. So I, I, we looked into it again, I, I reminded myself of the code, and then I spoke to him, he confirmed it. Typically, you need it because most buildings are built out of wood, non-combustible, but this is an assembly space that has to be built as a two B type of construction, which is a non-combustible built, so the combination of the, the type of construction, the non-combustible, and then the fact that you can access the roof with, I mean, a, a fire-rated stair, and then the sprinkler system in the building, that permits it to, that, that basically meets the exception in the code, so you don't need to provide the apparatus road. If we go to the next slide, please. So these are the building facades here, the main, these two are the, what we would call the front facade. The building is situated on an angle, because it's actually rotated, the cube is rotated to the direction of the prayer, which we call Kibla, this is the direction of Mecca. So this, this is where the, these are two, these two facades here are the front, this is the main program, if you would. And then this lower area here is the ancillary program that wraps the building, and the upper elevation shows the entrance here. We can go to the next, sure. This is the building in the rear, facing our neighbors. This is a slightly simpler facade with just windows and opening, one opening on the right side to, you'd be able to walk around the back if needed. And we can go, this is also a lower building in the back, so the taller building is actually towards the parking lot, and the building in the back, you see it in this rendering here. As I mentioned, the parking, and then you have the building, the main building here, and then this lower height building is wrapping that cube. Go to the next one, please. This is a, another shot of the, I'm sorry, I keep stepping. This is the, another shot of the mosque, towards like the evening time, with the tall windows wrapping the main facade, and you can see the light glowing inside, you can also see the dome and the, for lack of better terms, the spire or the minaret. And then we have, I think, one more shot of it during the day, so this is closer to the entrance. This area here is that gathering space we, I was talking about before. We have a mostly smooth white stucco on the facades everywhere with the pattern in it, and then at the entry, we have this stone that looks like marble highlighting the entry, and then we have a copper metal panel with the pattern in it, and the name of the mosque is labeled on it. That pretty much explains everything I've been showing and, and working on. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Are there rooftop H VAC units, or are they all down low along the backside?
We will have, yes, we will have at least two rooftop units, yeah, and, and I, I think I mentioned this last time, if you could, or I could show it here as well. We would be putting them back towards the back a little bit here, and, and it would be hidden by the parapets and accessed by the stairs, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ahmed, for your presentation, it's very helpful for everybody to look at it. I would like to invite Steve Esposito, if he could present the landscaping, it's important, because we get to see what has been taken out, the vegetation, and what we are pulling, putting in back to the site.
Good evening. I'm good, that is good. Jack. Steve Esposito, Esposito Associates, oops, I'm sorry, Engineering Properties. So, we've developed a landscape plan that consists of twenty-four deciduous trees, some are shade, you know, shade trees or ornamental trees, a hundred and eleven evergreen trees for, for screening, and multiple landscape, you know, beds and shrubs and perennials. Orange Turnpike, you know, we're going to create a hedge along the front, along with the deciduous trees, to create this sort of streetscape along, along the Turnpike. We're also going to have a hedge that's going to help screen the parking, or the cars parked in the parking lot across the whole front. In the parking lot, we're going to have some specimen trees for color along the perimeters, these are all evergreen trees, evergreen trees, evergreen trees, most of those are all double, double road staggered, they're going to be planted, twelve feet on center, the trees will be planted between seven and eight feet tall at planting height. They're, all of these are deer resistant, and again, the green represents the turf areas, the white area represents the parking, and if you want to know what any of it looks like, we've also provided as part of the record what the plants would look like, red maple, crab, crab, cherry, or evergreens, and then deciduous, and evergreen shrubs and perennials.
Is that good, Ryan?
Sure.
We can open it for public comment, then?
Yeah, we could.
Okay. So if anybody would like to come and speak, the only thing I would ask is that when you come up, put your information. I think it's just your name.
And address.
And address on there.
So I'll just...
And then please come to the microphone.
She's got the list. She's going to call them.
I'm going to call the names.
There you go.
Because they are on the list. And then if anybody else wishes to speak, they can add... Come on up and add their name to the list.
Elizabeth, do we know if there's people that are outside that can't get in because of the doors? I mean, how many names do you have on there?
There are only four names to speak.
Okay. Okay. So if there's...
So...
I'll go out there.
You're... Okay. Okay. Mino?
Mineo.
My name... I'm sorry. I get it all mixed. I prepared a statement.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, planning board members. My name is Rebecca Mineo. And I reside at Three Reynolds Road, Monroe, New York, a property that directly abuts the planned mosque construction at 1431 Orange Turnpike. My husband is a lifelong resident of Monroe, having lived here for 47 years, previously in overlooked estates. I hail originally from the rural and historic backcountry of Westchester in Bedford, New York. I became a regular visitor to Monroe in 2000. It wasn't until 2007 that we had saved enough money to look for our first home. We looked all around, Monroe, Chester, Warwick, to find a house with unique charm on a sizable lot that gave us space and privacy for our neighbors. We also needed to find a home that was still convenient for our daily commute to Westchester and property taxes that we could afford. Finally, in December of 2009, we found our house. We were so excited to be so close to Chris's family and find a lot that appealed to our rural sensibilities. It had mature trees. It was built in the early 1900s as a barn. Our home has beautiful timber framing inside at the time. There's even a pony grazing in the lot behind ours. When we moved in, we were well aware that the Presswood development was going to be built. And we're in dismay as we watched the entire hillside clear cut to our west and our yard dwarfed by giant homes mere feet from our property line. At least we still had a 50-foot buffer of our lawn between our property and Presswood. And more privacy to the east and south due to an undeveloped lot and the beautiful trees at Maple Lane Nursery School. We still had some peace and quiet. In 2009, the historic and rural character of 1431 Orange Turnpike at that time was partly what attracted us to our home. Knowing that our home was probably once part of the larger farm, it was one of the barns. We never expected for this historic home to be demolished for a huge 30-plus-foot-tall white stucco building that will also dwarf our rear patio area being built 29 feet from our southerly property line and set up on a hill. I would like the board to consider a few points and clarify some questions I have. I know you guys can't respond, but that's why I gave you the packet regarding this proposed development. The Village of Monroe new local law titled Village of Monroe: Place of Worship and Schools reads, "The Village of Monroe Board of Trustees finds that the village's residential neighborhoods particularly its one-family neighborhoods are quiet enclaves where families are able to enjoy clean air, roads free of traffic congestion, relative privacy, dark night skies, and the safety that comes from stable tenured neighbors. Much of these factors are dependent on segregating residential neighborhoods from non-residential uses, the generally frequent traffic, on-street parking noise, sight lighting, and frequent visitation by non-resident persons. The village wishes to ensure to the maximum extent allowed by the law that the development of any house of worship or school within its boundaries be consistent with the established residential character of existing neighborhoods. That property value and quality of life is maintained. Municipal utilities and the road system are not overburdened and the environment is not deteriorated. There have been some issues regarding how the operation of the mosque at 1431 Orange Turnpike has directly affected our quality of life, negatively affected the environment. And my worst fear is that the development of this site will negatively affect our property value as an abutting neighbor. The clear cutting of every tree on the lot, front and back, has created a severe runoff issue into our property. I first noted this in a letter to Mayor Purcell and Building Inspector Cox dated October 16th, 2017, a full month before they had a permit for the land grading done. There's no permit on file with the village for the destruction of the many old-growth trees on the lot, both in the front, the side, and the rear of the property. What is their storm water management plan for increased coverage of the lot? Oftentimes on Fridays and other large event days, since all the trees and brush have been cut, as people park on their side yard, they're pointed directly at my back patio. At night, we get headlights and building floodlights shining directly into our property." Here's some other issues for the planning board to consider to protect the established residential character of existing neighborhoods. Property value and quality of life referenced in the new village law for those of us living right next to this planned development. One, how will the development of the site guarantee that there will not be increased runoff from an already existing problem due to their land clearing? In their plans, it seems there will be significant land grading changes. Will there be a storm water management area such as they have at the corner of Presswood Drive and Reynolds Road, also beside the parking lot at Monroe Town Hall? When the old-growth trees were cut, they were laid down all through the front of the property and filled over with soil. Do they plan on building gigantic... Do they plan on building on gigantic rotting logs? These logs will surely need to be removed for a proper foundation for a parking lot or actual structure. Where will these logs be disposed of? The site sits up on a hill. A 30-plus-foot-tall white stucco facade will reflect any ground or parking lot lights and be extremely imposing, especially at night, to any surrounding neighbors. Have they considered more muted earth-toned coloring and materials for the structure, like the materials used on Monroe Town Hall? This building is a huge aesthetic departure from any of the surrounding architecture, although it's very interesting, beautiful, but I'm not sure it fits our community. The new village law regulating places of worship and school states the planning board shall require adequate screening in the required rear and side yards to protect the character and compatibility of adjacent residences. Screening shall be a minimum of six feet in height and may consist of a wall, fence, or other plantings as approved by the planning board. Given the grade of the lot, a berm with evergreens planted on top may be the only way for proper... to properly screen the development as many neighbors sit below the footprint of the planned structure. Right now, their plans are to plant giant green arborvitae. Given our deer population, we have a lot of them, as evidenced by the plantings that they currently have along Orange Turnpike of arborvitae, a better option would be to plant six-foot Norway spruce trees to provide adequate privacy. The new house of worship law states that, quote, "No non-residential use should be conducted between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The mosque currently has prayer times five times a day, as early as 4:15 a.m. and as late as 10:30 p.m., thus making the need for screening of paramount importance." The new village law goes on to state on page six that there shall be no outdoor use or assembly except that which is similar in scale and nature to outdoor use customary to a residential one-family dwelling, such as peaceful enjoyment or recreation by occupants except as specifically authorized in Article 12, Special Use Permit, blah, blah, blah. In the proposed site plans, there's a place for outdoor gathering. What are their intentions for that use? Also in their plans is a proposed six-inch water main that connects into the lot owned by Thomas Murphy. Can you explain the nature of the plans there? Are they planning to hook up to an existing pipe or do they plan on digging on his property? I know he wanted to attend tonight's meeting, but he was not able to. Considering the domes on the top of the proposed structure, how tall will it actually be? One last concern I would like to bring about, the proposed demolition of the home at 1431 Orange Turnpike, is that the home is listed on Zillow as being built in 1814. Many people have expressed a contemporary sentimentality towards the property as it served many community children as a nursery school. Even our mayor, Neil Dwyer, described one of the previous owners of the property, Mrs. Brophy, as, quote, "The Mary Poppins of Monroe." Upon further research, after hearing that part of the structure may date back to the Revolutionary War period, I found that the home was once also owned by Frederick G. Hulse, the previous mayor of the Village of Monroe from 1941 to 1946. He inherited the property in 1955. Going back through even previous deeds, the earliest occupant of the property that I can find so far is Robert Fowler, a member of the Orange County Board of Supervisors in 1827. Other prominent associations with this property and that house are the Galloways and the Mapes from the 1800s. In light of the recently enacted Local Law 7 of 2023, I feel incumbent on our Historic Preservation Commission, the planning board, to further investigate the local historical significance and the aesthetic importance of this early 1800s example of the federal architectural style before allowing it to be demolished. I appreciate your time and consideration towards all parties concerned in this proposed development. This is my husband's hometown. We've invested a lot in our property that we would like to continue to love. I added some pictures that outline how the property once looked, as well as some recent pictures of how this property's parking and drainage directly affects mine and my neighbors. Thank you.
Rebecca, could you email me that? Can you email me a copy of that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I live directly across the street from the proposed mosque site. And I can tell you, despite what they say about the hours that they will come and go, they come and go at all hours of the night. And I know this because the lights shine directly into my bedroom window when they come and go. I'm against this mosque being built the way they have it because it is going to not fit into the neighborhood. It's not aesthetically the type of building that we would want in our neighborhood. I'm opposed to the excess traffic coming and going and the constant lights in the windows from the traffic exiting onto Orange Turnpike is very disturbing to those of us who live across the street. I have no problem with having an Islamic prayer center, but I want it to reflect what is in the neighborhood now. I don't want something huge with minarets on it. And, you know, if you want a small building like they have now, I have no problem with that. But I really don't feel like I want to live across the street from a mosque. And I am absolutely opposed to this because I think it's going to bring down all the property values in the neighborhood. And we work very hard to keep our property nice and, you know, keep the values up. And I'm going to say the quiet part out loud here. With the current political climate, how long, if they build this huge mosque, is it going to take before some crazy decides that they don't want it in town, endangering all of the surrounding neighbors? I think that's an important consideration that the planning board should look into because, let's face it, it's not particularly safe. And I think that the lady in front of me made excellent, excellent points that I won't be leaguer, but I just want you to know that I am not, as a neighbor, in approval of this.
Thank you.
I'm going to mispronounce this. Manba Dioks?
Diouf, in case it was needed. So it's not needed by the authorities.
Kamel Malik? Anybody else? Those are the names I've written down.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Robert Schimmel, and I live next to the proposed mosque at Seven Maidstone. I moved here in 2014 with my job. It was a nice, quiet, peaceful residential area, which had beautiful neighbors, beautiful green scenery, peaceful tranquility to it. Since coming here, I've seen a neighborhood change, a dynamic, if you will. I feel pressure every day. As such, as was mentioned previously, concerns regarding the traffic situation can't be underestimated. With all the new foot traffic on, you can be sure when you bring people walking with cars coming, it provides a safety factor. I'm not against any mosque. I am worried about the lighting situation affecting our house because we are literally next to it, the rear part of it. I'm also worried about the runoff. We've seen physical manifestation of what the current grading has done and would like to see an adequate solution provided for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's someone in the back.
In the back?
Go forward.
Just put your... Put your name right on there. There you go.
My name is Brendan Ortiz. And I just want to say that Islam is one of the Abrahamic religions like Judaism and Christianity. And I think it could fit in the community. And it's one of the Abrahamic religions. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to make comment?
Mr. Chair, we are in a unique situation. When we scheduled this public hearing, we were adopting... We were acting under one version of that code. As of last week, the planning board did adopt a local law.
The village board.
Village board, excuse me. Adopted a local law that has altered the regulations as they apply to places of worship in the Village of Monroe. Given the timing of the application and notices had gone out and notices had been published, we gave the applicant the opportunity to either cancel the public hearing or hold the public hearing so that they could receive comments, respond to comments, and they elected to proceed forward with that public hearing. I have not done a line-by-line analysis of whether the current application complies with the new local law from a technical component. But there is one provision regulating the location of the parking lot. And they have indicated that their desire to apply to the ZBA for an area variance under the code, essentially in... As simplistic as I can make it is, under the new law, the parking lot cannot be between the building and the street.
Right.
Which it currently is. So the site would have to be significantly reconfigured and the applicant indicated at least enough effort, a desire to seek relief from the zoning board of appeals. And I... They're free to make that... They're free to make that application. In light of that, I would recommend we hold the public hearing open because the outcome of that application will... They'll either, if they're granted relief, will continue with the process that would be allowed to continue addressing public comment. We leave it open. If they are not granted relief, they will have to make some decisions with their consultants. And I leave that to them. Dominic, do you have any issues with that?
Dominic, credit is still on behalf of the applicant.
Dominic, to be fair, just step up. Just because of it being the public hearing.
My pleasure. Mr. Boucher and members of the board, thank you, first of all, for having the public hearing tonight. As Ms. Cassidy had said, notices had already gone out and we felt that it would actually be beneficial to get the feedback that we got tonight. And we appreciate the perspectives and the comments and the concerns that the neighbors have regarding the facility, without a doubt. So we're definitely paying attention and listening to them. a doubt, so we're definitely paying attention and listening to those. And we also agree with Ms. Cassidy, obviously, that the new zoning for places of worship has been adopted. We do believe that we need a variance in order to proceed with the project as proposed, and so we would ask you to make a referral to the zoning board of appeals. I think, believe that's your practice, is to send us there so that we can make that application directly to the zoning board of appeals. And then, you know, if we're successful or not, we would have to come back before this board and continue to address compliance and concerns at that time.
Sure. I think, you know, you can go to the board, to the zoning board with or without a referral from the planning.
In other towns, some towns.
Yeah, no, and I, yep, you can do that. You can make application to them. I don't know, and, you know, because this is so new to all of us, looking at the new law that's just, just passed.
I did look at it very so briefly. There was a question of where does this fall in terms of relief sought, and quite honestly, I have not, given the timing of when the law came down and other litigation I have, I have not had time to, and I should say unrelated completely, none of the municipality litigation.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I have not had a chance to look at that. In light of the situation, I would just recommend a simple vote that we're authorizing them to go to the ZBA, so there's no questions. We're not making any comment on the merits of the application. We're not advising that there's, whether there's relief or not, I leave that to Mr. Cortisco to have that out.
Yeah, it will be on us to make sure that we ask for what we need.
Right.
You know, and if we, God forbid, we don't ask for everything we need, we'd have to go back twice.
Yeah, no, we don't mind referring, you know.
So the issue is the requirement that, that the parking and loading zones must be behind the building. They cannot be between the building and the street.
In the street, right.
And so I have no objection to the board making that resolution tonight. Again, leaving the public hearing open in light of, we don't know what the ZBA, how they'll act before, for the application, and depending on their action, we can then proceed accordingly.
Okay. How do you guys feel about that? Good? So, all right, so we just need a motion to keep, to continue the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, to continue, so. Number Iannucci and number Kelly. So let's take care of that one first. All in favor of that?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so the public meeting, the public meeting will be continued. And then we need just someone to make a motion to refer the applicant to the zoning board of appeals to seek a variance of whatever type they would, would give.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, number Iannucci, in a second?
I'll second.
Okay, member Allen? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, we'll make that referral, and you'll draw that up, Elizabeth?
I can, I can type something up.
Okay.
And have it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yes, and you.
And just so you know, I'm also the ZBA secretary, so whatever you need, please let me know. I'll help you through the application process and whatever.
Keith Cook and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, pretty much. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have, so that concludes the public hearing part. You're all welcome to stay for the, the rest of the stuff, but you might want to go watch paint dry instead.
There is two football games on Saturday.
You can go to the captain's name.
Yeah.
All right.
Right around the corner.
Keep following all the way through.
Yeah, go through and left.
And you can, and if you want, you can go out that door. It may bing, but it's not going to set off any alarms.
Yeah, you can exit that way if you want.
Yeah.
If you're in the back. All right, something that we did not, and we'll just give us two minutes, but did you all have an opportunity to look at the calendar of dates for the upcoming year?
I didn't send it to them, so no, they have not seen it.
Okay. Oh, you didn't send it to everybody?
No, just you, because I needed this verbiage that you wanted on it.
So.
I just gave you the dates.
We have to vote on it tonight, because by our code, it has to be put in tonight. So all it is is, you know, I usually grade it every year. We can change it as we go if we need to, but we have to publicize it on the website, right? But there is one date in there. I think it's April 22nd or 3rd, where Passover is then, so any of our, like Joel Manolos guys, they would have a problem with that, so we might want to change that one meeting. Everything else looks to me, I look to the.
Do you want to just do one meeting that month? Just have the workshop special meeting?
We could, so that would be the second, so that would be the Tuesday.
Do the second Monday.
Yeah, we could do a joint, we could do a special meeting and do both the workshop and the regular meeting.
Yeah, the only thing is. The calendar.
They didn't get the calendar.
I can't.
No, no.
That's what he's saying. We can just join them together.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't mind exiting, and feel free to talk all you want, but just not right up here.
You're welcome to stay as well.
Yes, you're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay. It's an open meeting.
So then it would be April 8th would be the special meeting?
Um, no. We, well. Yes, that's what we would do. No, May. No, so I think.
This is one question, so it's got to go up. Or do you want to go back?
I'm, I'm almost wondering if we do it. No, I guess we could do, because this is, this is the regular meeting, 26th of March.
Correct. Oh, okay, so it's too close to that meeting, so you're saying if we do a special meeting on the 23rd?
Yeah, so March 25th would be the, no, I guess, I guess we could do it. So we'll just do a special meeting on April 8th. That's what we'll do for now.
Okay, so in April.
When's Easter?
I.
Yeah, it's a really good question.
Yeah.
It usually doesn't affect, but that might if it's like right there, because that very well be it.
Bye, guys.
You know what?
Thank you, I appreciate that. What were you saying, April?
Hang on one second.
Easter, when is Easter?
Easter.
In March, I believe.
March?
End of March.
It is not showing up on my calendar, so I don't know. U.S. holidays, hold on, let's get it there.
March 21st. Right, so we have a March 26th regular meeting, then Easter would be March 31st, April 8th. March 31st.
That's an early Easter.
Yeah, it's early. It's not very early, it's actually like right, it's, Aprils are usually late, because it goes by, you know, the lunar calendar, but when you get to the April, so it's, it's early, but it's not like, I mean, there's been crazy early in March.
It's like an April Easter.
Yeah, like April.
It's two.
Yeah.
Seems right.
Feels right, seems right. Is right. So, um, so I think what we could do just for now to accommodate, and we'll just say that April we'll do one meeting, on the 8th, we'll have it as a special meeting where we'll do a, you know, workshop and regular business, so.
Please send me what you have, because I need the verbiage.
The only thing I changed.
I don't have this and this, so just send it to me. Nope. That's your copy. Oh, maybe I do, because look, it says 22. Just send it to me. I sent you the dates.
As soon as I get here, I sit down, I'm like, feel like the little kid at the.
So what we do need to do, though, is approve.
Right.
We have it here.
Right.
Who are the minutes? We got to do that, too, but we need to approve the calendar just so we can post it. We could change it later, but we have to put it up.
All right, whatever you got, it's good.
Yeah, so.
No, I'm sending them to you from now on while I'm running. Second?
We got to see what's in it. Well, you got to vote for it first, then you get to see what's in it.
So we're still doing our typical third Tuesday, fourth?
Yes.
Second Monday, fourth Tuesday.
It can't change, because the other dates, the other boards are here. Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so did we just take that vote?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Barbara made the motion, Keith second.
Keith second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the calendar can go up with that one correction from what we originally saw. All right, the minutes, it's, it was in there that we had four sets of minutes up, but.
No, I only had three. That was my mistake, sorry.
There's only three. So we need, if you guys read them, we don't have the August 22nd meeting minutes in there. So you have August 14th, October 10th, October 24th, so.
Couple absences. I wasn't there for the second.
Yeah, I was just going to say, there are a couple absences, absences, and do you have the attendance right now?
August 14th.
I have the. Hold on, let me see, I have the drafts on the website.
I think it was you and Fred that were gone.
Hold on, I think I might have the draft on the websites.
Jeff?
Yep.
While she's pulling that up, what's the May schedule?
The May schedule is May 13th and May 28th.
I will not be here on the 28th.
You might want to tell me closer to that date.
No, 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 no. After the year, I will not be here.
All right, so.
So I'm letting you know now.
The May 28th date, Rhonda, write that down. Yeah, that's a regular meeting, so we definitely need an attorney.
I will have Mickey ears on.
Ah, there you go. Ah, bless you. Yeah, I'm going in March. My grandson's 2nd.
It is 10 grand.
Jeremy gives a little bit of a discount for the military, so.
So it's only nine grand for you guys.
Eight and a half.
Eight 14, member Iannucci and Allen were absent.
All right, so we, so they can't, they just can't vote on it, so. So we need a motion to approve the eight 14 meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, did you say member Kelly wasn't there?
No.
No, I said Allen.
So, member Kelly made a motion.
Second.
Second.
Member Umberto, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes passed. The.
Eight 14, what was the other one, 10 10? 10 10. 10 10.
Yeah, I think this is when you, yeah, you were on, correct.
Members Kelly and Carlitch were not here.
Okay. So Marilyn, you can't vote?
I know.
All right. Yes, you did. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the October 10th meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Number Iannucci, in second?
I'll second it.
Number Halfneck? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Staying.
Okay, so the motion passes, so the minutes are approved.
10 24.
I was absent.
Yes, you are, and so, I'm sorry, Barbara, you cannot vote on this. Sorry.
All right, so we need a motion from any other person.
I'll make the motion.
Remember Halfneck? Make the motion.
Who's second?
Member Kelly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And two abstentions. Okay. Minutes are approved, and.
And I'll have the eight 22 minutes. I don't know why I didn't put them up there, but they weren't.
Okay, and we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Member Kelly and. And member Allen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.